Nathan, would you check your mic, please?
Did you say Nathan?
Thank you, Nathan. Penny, good evening. Would you check your mic for me, please?
Sure. You hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay.
Gavin, would you check your mic for me, please? Gavin may be lit, but not in the, not at the desk. We had a fun run back from North Carolina today. No, no, it runs on premium, but Vera's runs on diesel, so it's not an issue. Oh, no kidding. Okay, well, it's a good thing we filled up in Gaffney then, isn't it? Okay. Yeah, I run premium in the, in the canyon. Well, I'm going into Atlanta tomorrow. I got a half a tank. That'll get me there and back. Well, I'd be surprised, you know, I think the quick trip up on, up on Mars Hill, they get trucks several times a day in a lot of cases, so. Oh, yeah, I'm just talking about availability. I mean, at what point do you say I'm not buying any fuel anymore? Okay. Yeah, well, the, we, we. Yeah, yeah, we stopped in Gastonia this morning and they were out and we stopped in Gaffney and they had plenty and hardly any line. Actually, we just pulled up to a bomb. Sure. We've got Penny and Nathan and ostensibly Gavin, but I haven't seen him yet. And of course, you, you two, gentlemen.
I am here.
Evening, Gavin.
Good evening, everybody. Brad will go make it a quick one tonight.
Well, that's up to everybody who's participating. It'd be, I expect it'll be quicker than last month.
Yeah. We didn't do too bad getting through that one, though, did we? Considering what we had to handle.
No, no, y'all did a great job.
I thought you did a fantastic, I kept picking at you, making it sound like I was adding stuff to you.
Evening, Karen. Would you check your mic, please?
Yep, how's this?
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Scott, good evening. Would you do a mic check for me, please?
Good evening, yes, sir.
All right. Yeah, we're in pretty good shape.
Brad, are you, are you gonna auto mute or are you, I've been having to turn mine back on every time. Are you muting me?
No, sir. You have me confused with the person running this show.
I hear you.
I am, but I, I am, I serve at the whim of the IT department, just like everybody else in the modern world.
Well, if I'm, if I'm not on their list to mute and they want to put me on that, that's fine. I don't know. If not, I'll keep unmuting, but that's why it takes me a second every once in a while, because I, it dawns on me, everybody else is unmuted and I'm not.
Well, I think most people stay muted except when they're speaking.
Yeah, okay, good deal.
Mike, good evening. Would you do a mic check, please?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Stephen, good evening. Could I have a mic check, please?
Hey, I'm here. Stephen Strickland's on.
All right. Man, I got mic, yeah. All right, the gang's all here. Four minutes, too. All right, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call tonight's meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Good evening and welcome to the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the O'Conie County Planning Commission. We are a recommending body to the O'Conie County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made tonight on rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to the O'Conie Board of Commissioners or appropriate city council for final action. Tonight's agenda and sign-in sheets for people wishing to speak are available outside the commission chambers. Anyone participating remotely wishing to speak should use the raise hand function located at the bottom of the Zoom window during the relevant request. This is the procedure we follow. The O'Conie County Planning Department staff presents their report and recommendations on each request. Public input is received from the petitioner or petitioner's representative. Public input is received from a group representative or any individual speaking in favor of the request. This period will be limited to twenty minutes total. Input will alternate between in-person and online participants. Public input is then received from a group representative or any individuals speaking in opposition to the request. This period will be limited to twenty minutes total. Input will alternate between in-person and online participants. The petitioner or petitioner's representative is allowed an opportunity for response or clarification if time remains in the twenty-minute period. The public input session will then be closed. The Planning Commission will discuss the request and may ask questions of Planning Department staff and/or the petitioner. Upon a motion and a second, and after any discussion of the motion, the Planning Commission will vote on the motion. The commission may elect to approve, modify, place conditions on, table, or deny a motion. We ask that you observe the following items regarding public input. Upon approaching the podium, please state your name and home address. Please direct your, your comments to the Planning Commission and not to the audience. When there are multiple speakers, please avoid repeating statements made by previous speakers so that there is time to hear from everyone. We ask the audience to extend the courtesy of not applauding or commenting on any of the speakers. Do we have the sign-in sheets for the speakers? First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Commissioners, you have in front of you the minutes from the April nineteen, twenty twenty-one meeting. If you would please take a moment to review and let me know if you have any corrections, comments, modifications. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, they be accepted as presented.
Second.
And, and who was the motion, please?
Nathan Byrd.
All right, we have a motion from Nathan and a second from?
Scott.
From Scott, thank you. Any discussion? Scott, how do you vote?
Approve.
Mike?
Approved.
Nathan?
Approved.
Matt? Chuck?
Approved.
Penny?
Approved.
Karen?
Approved.
Steve?
Approved.
Gavin?
Approved.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. First item of new business is special use P twenty-one dash zero zero five three, John and Brittany Wardlow. Grace?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is special use case P twenty-one zero zero five three. Here you have the location of the site within the county up in the northwest corner. And here's the aerial of this property along Osborne Road. The current zoning is AG agricultural. And it is within the country estates character area on the county's future development map. The request is for approval of a septic tank cleaning service. And here is the concept plan. You can see the existing barn. There are no new structures proposed as part of this request. And you can also see the proposed storage area for equipment. Here are existing site conditions, existing barn, road, frontage, and gravel driveway. And staff recommends conditional approval, subject to one condition. This is a standard zoning condition and I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We'll now hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's agent. If the property owner or their agent would like to step forward and tell us what you'd like to tell us about the request.
Hello, John Wardlow, fifteen sixty-one Osborne Road. Um, I'm opening a septic pumping company. Live at the property address and we'll use barn property for equipment storage. And to keep my truck. I really don't know where else to go with this, but that's what I'm here for.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We also have another Wardlow who has signed up to speak and, and I'm sorry, I can't read that name. Is that? If you'd like to speak, but you don't have to if you don't want to. Not a problem. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Please.
My name is Philip Hancock. My address is eighteen twenty Hebron Church Road. My property backs up to his and I'm in favor for this request.
Uh-huh, sure. Thank you very much. Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of the request? All right, anybody else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the request?
Yes, I'm Ned Michael. At eighteen ninety Hebron Church Road. And I don't see anything wrong with the request. I'm in favor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the request?
My name's Scott Mashburn. I'm at twelve forty-one Sims Road. And I speak in favor of the request also.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the request? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to the request? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Scott, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Mike?
No questions or comments.
Nathan?
No questions or comments.
Matt? Chuck?
My question may be just a curiosity as to how the system works. I noticed you're gonna keep a tanker, uh, storage there. I assume that's where you offload your, your service truck. How often does that tanker leave or does somebody come and service it?
Please.
Well, there are multiple ways I plan on emptying my truck. Uh, one is I've got a pre-approval letter from the city of Watkinsville, that wastewater treatment facility. But you need multiple ways to dispose of your septicage. So, uh, I will use a one of two environmentally approved septic disposal companies is what they are, when I'm being wholesale environmental. So that's where everything will be attached to a manifest. Anything put in the tanker will be attached. Anything put in the tanker will be attached as well as handling.
Okay. I just have RVs that leak every now and then, so I was just checking on that. There is a there's a state or some agency inspect your place every so often, like an act?
I am inspected by the county, yeah, the the truck and equipment.
I just wanted to understand the business.
Thank you.
Penny, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Karen?
No, no questions or comments.
Stephen?
No.
All right, Gavin?
No questions or comments.
Thank you, sir. If there are no other questions or comments from the commission, I'll entertain a motion.
Hey Brad, this is Stephen Strickland. I'll make a motion to approve special use case P twenty-one dash zero zero five three with one condition recommended by staff.
Thank you, we have a motion.
Mike Floyd will second.
And we have a motion and a second motion from Steve Strickland. Motion to approve from Steve Strickland, second by Mike Floyd. Any discussion? Scott, how do you vote?
Approved.
Mike?
Approved.
Nathan?
Approved.
Matt? Chuck?
Approved.
Penny?
Approved.
Karen?
Approved.
Stephen?
Approved.
Gavin?
Approved.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is rezone P twenty-one dash zero zero five four Rhino Mini Storage LLC.
Do you want to give them a chance to leave if they want to?
Oh, absolutely. But you're welcome to stay and watch your local volunteers in action.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is rezone case P twenty-one zero zero five four for Rhino Mini Storage LLC. Here's the site location in the county. And yep, there's the aerial imagery of a portion of the parcel that is under consideration. Current zoning is Office Business Park, OBP. And it is in the Civic Center character area on the future development map. The current request is to rezone a portion of tax parcel B zero six zero three zero C from OBP to OIP Office Institutional Professional District, Foreign Assisted Living Facility, and General Office Space. Here's the representative architectural images, both for the office on the left and assisted living building on the right. And the concept plan. And a closer up image here, you can see the single-story office building on the eastern side and the single-story assisted living on the western side. Staff recommends conditional approval, subject to six conditions. The first three there are the standard zoning conditions. Number four, prior to issuance of our certificate of occupancy for any building on the site, developer shall convey to O'Conne County sufficient right-of-way and construct improvements as may be required to bring Moreland Heights Road up to applicable standards of the UDC, or a structural and geometric equivalent as approved by the O'Conne County Public Works Director. Such improvements shall be shown on the site development plan submitted for the project. Number five, no metal siding shall be permitted on any building in the development. And number six, the total building square footage on the property shall not exceed one hundred and sixty-four thousand three hundred square feet. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's agent.
Good evening. My name's Frank Pittman. I'm at fourteen hundred Saxon Road in Watkinsville, representing Rhino Mini Storage LLC, the owner of this property. As Grace mentioned, the this property is currently zoned OBP. It has an approved zoning plan on it today for eighty thousand square feet of office space. I'm asking for somewhat, I would consider a little bit of a downzoning from OBP to OIP to allow for an assisted living facility as well as one twenty thousand square foot office. The difference between the two, you know, everybody, traffic's always a big deal. The existing approved project is accounts for eleven hundred and twenty-three daily trips of traffic. This project would be four hundred and seventy-nine, so less than half of the approved of the traffic on the approved project for today. We're proposing a one-hundred-bed assisted living facility and twenty thousand square foot office building does meet the future land use map. This, the assisted living facility would be a for-profit facility, so there would be taxpayers. They would also have up to fifty employees, so there'd be up to fifty jobs available in the community. The office building would be built probably as a second phase as the need arises, and it could be for lease or for sale. But otherwise, we we agree with all the conditions that's proposed by the planning staff. And I'd I'd just like to reserve time for any rebuttal. But we'd like to ask your approval for this project here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no one else signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this proposal? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to this proposal? Pittman, I believe you have as much time for rebuttal as you may need. Hearing no one else wishing to speak in favor or opposition, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Scott, do you have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Mike?
No questions.
Nathan?
No questions.
Matt?
Yeah, I do. I've got a question. Come by the office motion part of that, Frank. Is it do we like a shell, and then they're going to build it out for whatever care? Are they going to divide it up already?
So they, at this point in time, there wouldn't be any of the above. That that would just be set aside. So they're not even going to shell it. They're the the owner developer, their 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 main intention is for the assisted living facility. The the office is, I hate to use the word afterthought, but it's it's a secondary project that as they they may have somebody that comes along, wants to buy the whole building. They may at some point in time find a tenant. I doubt they would do anything with it until they have a tenant for it.
Yep, so some of this parking showing on the right-hand side may not be built.
Let me find a slight plan here. Yeah, so the the what I would assume is that the the parking directly in front of the assisted living would obviously be built with the assisted living facility. And there would probably be an access drive that goes through the middle of what would be the future parking lot, you know, as part of the assisted living, and that that other park would not be built into the office building.
All right, that was my question.
Yep.
Chuck?
Before you go, do we have a management company already in the talks, or is this?
So the 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 property owner's wife is actually managing a facility out of town currently and has she's she's the number two person for a number of years, and she actually just recently has been promoted to to run the site. So this would they would bring this in and own this and manage this themselves.
Penny, any questions or comments?
None.
Karen?
None for me.
Stephen?
No, sir. Thank you.
Gavin? Gavin, you're muted.
Started talking with that. Sorry about that.
No worries, we love it anyway.
Yeah, I've got about three items. First item I need to bring to the attention of Brad to to the planning commission that just to make everyone aware so that there's no question at any point in the in the future regarding this site. I have no interest in the site, don't know who the owners are or players involved. However, I was involved, and I rezoned this site and owned this site. Purchased it from Mr. Ward. That has been described the previous site for storage units. And but I sold that unit within about a year of purchase in two thousand and two, so I had a partner with that, Mr. Colvin Whitehead, if you all know him or knew him, he's he's deceased now, unfortunately. But I just want to make that make you aware of that. And then I, in addition to that, if there's no no issues that anyone regarding that item or planning staff, since I have no interest, happy to stand down if if someone sees that as as necessary, but my understanding of the code and ordinance and the state law is, is that I don't have to in this case unless y'all want me to.
Gavin, thank you for your transparency, but we don't see any need for you to recuse.
All right. A couple items I have. One, in regards to planning staff in that previous question asked in terms of parking service area. If if that any of that frontal parking for that proposed office later is not built, there's a current number of parking spaces. Is that acceptable in regards to that total site plan for the for the site? My interpretation was is that would be that we we would have some parking and or delivery issues with the existing plans layout.
Grace, can you speak to the parking requirement?
Sure, at the time of development, adequate parking would be ensured for all uses on the site. So it would have to to be compliant if they, for each separate use.
So do I understand what you're saying, Grace, is that the regardless of whether the office building is constructed initially, because the site plan is set up this way, the entire parking lot will have to be constructed?
No, not necessarily. It would just be the parking for the assisted living if that's all that's in the first phase.
Okay.
Well, that that'll brings up a second question. Is is there any intent to divide the two parcels currently, or would the the parcel that might be for sale in the future, the office building, would that be divided as a separate block beyond the parking parking area? Is that what's proposed, so that that would be a private parking lot?
So at at this point in time, I would say that that's that's not what what is proposed, but I don't think that's ruled out either. I think that that that's probably one of the situations where it depends on what comes along and who comes along, that they want that office building, whether they want to buy it or whether they want to lease it. You know, if it's a lease tenant, that it wouldn't necessarily be a reason to subdivide it. If it's a purchase tenant, that yes, they very well may want to. And it could be subdivided at that time. It wouldn't have to be subdivided now.
Okay, well, I I agree with those items. The only the only thing that that I I want to make sure, and I and I'll basically ask this question to you and the planning staff. And I'll I'll give you a couple couple short sentences introduction in regard to the roadway, the primary roadway there was Moreland Heights Drive there, a road. I can't remember. I did some boring tests on that road, and it's just a one, one and a quarter inch bonding surface on top of that. Underneath it's an old you know, dirt road. Just was a simple dirt road with a with oil sprayed, that kind of thing, as far as that base. So there's there's not there's not anything out there in regards to a tremendous amount of sub aggregate base of any sort on that primary road. I want to bring that to 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 everyone's attention here and in regards to the planning department, and also make sure that if if we're not, if that property is not going to be designed, that there is appropriate requirements for access, single or double access entrance to that other parcel as as it relates to a subdivision of that office building. The only reason I bring that out is there is, there was at one time a proposed possible access to the bypass, of which I'll have left a sizable right-of-way. That's the same thing I did initially, and that's basically all the comments I made. I'm I'm in support of the plan. Have no, I I think it'll be an ad. Can you still hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I lost video there for a second. I'm in support of the plan, and I think it would be be appropriate use for the site, and I believe that if they do it architecturally, as they have shown, that it'd be be a nice addition to the the bypass frontage there. That that'll be all.
Thank you, Gavin. Grace, would you come up and take a minute and speak to the road and and the requirements there, please?
Absolutely. So the the issue of bringing the road up to standard, that is addressed by staff condition number four. So prior to any certificate of occupancy for any building, whether it's the first phase or a later phase, would be Moreland Heights Road would need to come up to the UDC standards from the project entrance.
Sure. So just to to add to what Grace just said, so the, can you go back to the map, Brad? The plant, no, the the site plan, yeah. So what's shown is lot one is is actually a project that's in construction today for self-storage facility. So from so that first driveway there on Moreland, the the one to the east, from there, that is already approved, and and as part of those plans, they they're required, they're already going to be upgrading the road from there back to Main Street and adding a right turn lane, a D cell lane, right turn lane on the Moreland off of the highway as well that was permitted through DOT. So most of it's already in the works. This last little section would be added as part of this project.
All right, that's that answers the questions I always have. So you're 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 anticipate having a having the a connection that would possibly route. Will you be, will you you won't have a connection back around to the the property where the assisted living would be, but but you do have at least the at at this point, you have the ability to to provide that access to that secondary access if it's needed via that other parcel. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The way this would be set up is basically these multiple entrances would all, that would be interparcial access across the as you see on the site plan, you kind of see that the the first entrance to the east is straddles the property line already. So that one, that would be a an easement that went across from there to the west so that they could use either either of those entrances.
Yeah, I I remember drawing those these these terms of these access points and 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 my plan, trying to make all that stuff work out. So I know there's a lot of details here. I'm just I'm just making sure that in regards to the our approval tonight, that they're the stipulations. I have not read the stipulations. Really fine-tuned they read them. I I I'm very much aware that that the building permits involved would require that that you meet the whatever requirements the county has. But just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware they are, you know, there are some items that that are going to be contentious upon the the owner and and prospective buyer.
Right. Yes, sir.
Grace, I have one question for staff, please. In the comments from other departments in the in the presentation, Georgia Department of Transportation has indicated that the projected average daily trips that this development would generate will require a left turn lane from Main Street into Moreland Heights. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, and that would be the responsibility of the developer to do that.
Yes.
Even on that public road, so they'd have to make whatever arrangements they needed to for right-of-way access or or?
Yes, they would need to coordinate with that that with GDOT.
Okay. In phase one, which is just the assisted living center, as I understand it, does that requirement still hold? Does the assisted living center by itself generate enough trips to require that left turn lane?
Uh, that might be a question for the applicants.
I, I can answer that question.
Okay.
And, and, and I'll comment even on the, the first part, so I've had some conversations with GDOT. They, they haven't seen, GDOT has certain triggers that require left turn lanes and it's, it's not, it's not total daily trips, it's, it's peak hour trips.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they haven't even seen the numbers broken down yet, so they, they, they kind of made a comment with some, with some very initial information, it may not require it at all. Um, but that would, that will be, and, and, and these guys will obviously be privy to that information, but they'll be provided all that information and make, make the final call on if it's required and when it's, when it's required.
And if GDOT does indicate that it's required, is the property owner prepared to do that?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the planning commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to, uh, accept, uh, this, uh, special, uh, I mean, rezone, uh, what's, I'm looking for the number here, uh, P twenty-one dash zero zero five four.
Uh, and is that with the conditions from staff?
That it, that is with conditions, uh, of staff as, as we have it.
All right, and was that, I, I don't have my, my screen is, uh, we're still sharing, is that Gavin?
Uh, this is Gavin, yes.
All right, we have a motion to approve with conditions from Gavin Jordan, do we have a second?
I'll second, this is Karen.
All right, and a second from Karen Hilliard, do we have any discussion? Scott, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mike?
Prove.
Nathan?
Prove.
Matt?
Approve.
Chuck?
Approve.
Penny?
Prove.
Karen?
Approve.
Stephen?
Approved.
Gavin?
Approved, of course.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is special use P twenty-one dash zero zero five six nineteen seventy-three Hog Mountain Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, as you said, this is special use case P twenty-one zero zero five six. Um, here's the site location, Long Hog Mountain, as well as the aerial image of the two parcels, uh, involved in the request. Current zoning is B two highway business. And it is within the civic center character area on the future development map. Uh, the request is for approval of modular buildings to be used in the commercial development. And staff notes that all uses that are submitted with the application are allowed by right and are not under consideration this evening, and it's just for the building type. Here is the proposed concept plan. And a little bit bigger version of it, you can see the, uh, proposed modular buildings for retail and food vending, as well as a pavilion and, uh, open recreational space. Here are the representative architectural images submitted. And staff recommends denial of this special use request due to its incompatibility with the long-term land use goals and objectives of the Oconee County twenty eighteen comprehensive plan. Uh, should the request be approved, staff recommends, uh, six conditions. First three are the standard zoning conditions, and then number four, all modular buildings shall contain wood, brick, or stone accents as shown in applicable representative images submitted with the application. Said accents shall be in keeping with the established architectural style of the existing building at nineteen seventy-one Hog Mountain Road. Number five, all modular buildings shall be placed on a permanent foundation. And number six, no more than five modular buildings shall be installed on the subject property, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's agent.
Sorry, yeah, my name's Frank Pittman, fourteen hundred Saxon Road. Um, the, uh, property owner is also here with me, um, Andy Bars, your address?
Yeah, my name's Andy Bars, property owner, address sixteen oh seven Lee Haven Way, Athens, Georgia.
So, um, the last year and a half is, is, has been, uh, a, a weird time in, in this country and, and, and even, I guess worldwide with, with, uh, what's going on with, with COVID. Um, as part of that, what, what you've seen is, um, restaurants have struggled. People have, have, have wanted to get, have not wanted to get inside restaurants and eat and that kind of thing. Um, so Andy has a vision and, and I'll let him tell you a little bit more about his vision, but of creating a, a, an environment where people can go and spend some time outside, um, and, um, and can get their food and with, without having to go into a restaurant. As, as Grace mentioned, the, uh, the, the plan is for, uh, basically a, a community park with some, um, smaller, um, vending service type, uh, restaurant uses, um, on the property. Um, uh, you guys may know that, uh, you know, Chick-fil-A has been setting up a food truck there, Chick-fil-A has, is on board to, to come into one of these, uh, buildings as well. The, um, the uses are, are all allowed, it's on B two, like, everything on this site plan Andy could do today. Um, the, the request for you guys today is, 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 as part of Andy's vision, he, he, he wants to do something that's, that's, that's cool and, and new and, and, and refreshing. Um, this, this is not something that's, that is brand new, it's just brand new for Oconee County. Um, there's some of these developments and you can go to Greenville, Spartanburg, um, and we can, we can give you some websites to look at, some of these developments are really cool, they're thriving. Um, the request is for special use for a, for modular buildings. And, and even the, the modular term is a little bit misleading. Um, the only thing modular about this is the shell itself, so basically the shells are brought in, uh, foundations are built on site, the shells are mounted to the foundations and everything else about the building is built on site, um, which would be allowed by code today. Um, so the only, the only modular part is the shell itself. Um, as you can see from these buildings, um, there, there are a lot of different ways to do it. Um, it, it's, it's not a cheaper way to do it, it's actually probably more expensive than stick built. It's just a, a fresher look and it's, um, you know, it, 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 it draws people in with this, it's catchy and, and, you know, easy on the eyes to, to, to see. Um, in, in reviewing the staff report, um, there were a couple of things I wanted to touch on, it, it looked like the, um, you know, we've, we've spent over six months going back and forth working with planning staff, um, on this project. Uh, we couldn't start it back, back six months ago because there was no mechanism in, in the UDC to even do something like this. So the, the whole modular building special use is, is a new requirement, or, or is a new option that was just approved by the BOC, I think, two months ago. Um, so in touching on some of these items that, that staff used to, to recommend denial, um, you know, that one of the comments is that the desired goal is, is, I guess basically that it, that it's, it doesn't complement existing built environment around it. Well, it's, it's the first time we've seen this, um, this wasn't even allowed two months ago, so it, nowhere else in the county could you go to do this and it matches what's next to it because it, it didn't exist until now. This is the first request under this, this new code section. Um, the, uh, it looks like the rest of the items on their checklist, it, it seems to meet. Um, the other thing is about the facade, so again, that's, that's because this is a new, a new requirement. And then the last comment that, that they mentioned was the size of the buildings not matching the, the buildings or neighboring it. Um, but again, the size of the buildings, we'll make sure everybody understands, the size of the buildings is going to be the size of buildings, whether that, whether the, whether the shell's brought in or it's built on site. That, that's not a, that's not a topic for really discussion, I mean, that's, that's what's going to be built. Um, it, it's just the materials that, that we're here to ask you about. Um, there'll be small buildings, that, that's the whole idea of the project, so you can get five different vendors on the same piece of property, so people have options. Um, it's, it's almost like a food court, but it's outside where people can go and kids can play. Um, you know, with, so with that, we, we would like to ask for your, for your approval, but I want to turn it over to Andy, cause, because I want you guys to hear Andy's vision of where we got and where we are.
Thank you.
Again, my name's Andy Bars, um, actually my office is in the adjacent building, uh, in a few months, I'll own that building entirely, but I own the two properties in between there and the road. Um, my vision, I have a five-year-old and a three-year-old. And we're fortunate to have a pretty large backyard at our house, which is about five minutes from here on Danforth Bridge Road, but there's a lot of families in the community that don't have a large backyard, and I think that was made real apparent during the current and past pandemic of COVID, and so my vision was really threefold. Uh, this is not a place that we plan to serve alcohol, it's going to be a family-friendly environment. So it's going to be for family, food, and fun, so it's a place that, um, families can gather, they can eat, they can socialize, it's open air. Their kids can be outside, you know, releasing some energy and playing with other kids. Uh, it also provides a smaller footprint option for existing, uh, restaurants and vendors that may not, can afford because of the alterations of business with this pandemic, the traditional three thousand square foot, you know, restaurant, if you will. And all that'll obviously be meeting of code and, and health requirements and whatnot, but it provides a more economical option for some of these businesses that are existing. Um, as I mentioned, it provides a very family-friendly environment so that it hopefully will be more healthy for the family time and their engagement with other families and, and kids. Uh, but also a passion of mine is starting new businesses, and so this provides a footprint for a teenager, a college student, a retiree, somebody that wants to start a business, and again, doesn't have the wherewithal to, to lease or purchase or build you know, several thousand square feet to start a, start a business, so this gives them a, a, a way to inch into the market, get in front of the public and the consumer, and so hopefully this will help incubate new businesses for the community and for the area of Butler's Crossing. So that, that's my vision, uh, as Frank mentioned, this is, this is not a, uh, less expensive option, it's, it's, we, we could have already had this built and up and running under current code, and we are so grateful that y'all provided us an avenue through the special use uh, to present this, we believe that this and what our vision is, is more architecturally pleasing, and we believe that the architectural product will have a, a huge bearing on the success of this footprint. Um, and so that's, that's our vision and, and I stand willing to answer any questions, uh, from the commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone online who would like to, excuse me? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in favor of this request? Thank you, is there, I, let's see, I have signed up to speak in opposition, Carol, and I'm sorry, is it Bridger? Bridges, Carol Bridges, would you please come up?
I'm Carol Bridges, I live across the street directly from this business or these businesses.
Ms. Bridges, would you tell us your address, please?
I'm sorry, nineteen eighty Hog Mountain Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
If I bring up the map, you could see that my driveway is a little to the right of the driveway coming in and out of this proposed business. Um, also, this driveway is the same driveway for both of the front buildings. And there's not a road that goes between the front buildings that go, would go back to this, like, would have to be a road built to go back into there, and it's very tight. Um, my concern is, as we all saw the pictures of what they're going to put up there, I'm going to be looking out my living room window at it every day and every night. Things are bad enough with the traffic, because we're really close to Butler's Crossing, and on my understanding, they're going to be widening part of that before it gets to my area. But the traffic backs up, up over the hill, a quarter of a mile in the afternoons. There's also, uh, the picnic basket is in the upper building, I think at seventy-three. And, uh, their traffic comes in, goes around the building and comes back out the other side, which is not an exit, it has to go back down through the parking lot, and it exits out of the entrance. Everything comes in and out at the same spot. I've had cars in my front yard from accidents. I think adding more traffic into this would be wrong. And from what I see, there's not enough parking for this. Um, I see the parking, I see the parking lot full every day at different times. Um, also, the noise. Now, I've lived here for forty-seven years, my family's from Oconee County. I, you know, I want it to grow, I want it to be nice, but I, that looks like a carnival to me. That was just my opinion of pictures. Um, parking, like I said, I mean, I see, I think, five parking places that he was talking about adding. It's just, it's not enough to, for five more businesses. And the entrance and exit in the same place is dangerous. Now, I, I saw what I got to say.
Thank you, ma'am. No, ma'am, not at this time, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this request?
Not this or the opposition's question.
Okay.
My, my name is, uh, Jeff Faulkner, ten thirty's Tennessee Court, Watkinsville. Pardon my attire, I, um.
There's no mandatory dress code here, so.
So, um, parking, you know, I mean, I, I know restaurants require so many parking spots per, um, that would be, like she said, I, in the middle of the day, there's no way there's enough parking for five businesses plus what all is there, at, at night, I, I would see where there would be, um, or could be. Um, but my question is, do these restaurants have kitchens there or the food cooked off-site?
For the, you want to touch on this, Andy? Well, there's no restaurants here.
Well, Chick-fil-A's restaurant.
Chick-fil-A's restaurant, and Chick-fil-A will be.
Brad, we can't hear the discussion going on there.
What, what we'll do, gentlemen, is, I appreciate your question and feel free to ask any questions to the commission that you would like. And then, uh, in the commission session, when we have the option to ask questions, your questions will likely be asked and answered.
Okay. So, okay, so that, if it was onsite cooking, that's one thing, my question is about sales tax, if it's, if it's a uh, licensee or operator of a restaurant that's in Clark County or another, no, excuse me, another county that brings food on site there, the tax revenue, is it collected in Clark County because the food's cooked there? Or how are they tracking the, the, the revenue, you know, to make sure that the tax dollars are, I mean, it's just, just a question.
True.
So, uh, not opposed to, I think it looks good, um, but, uh, I don't see where there's anywhere near enough park, but.
So, so to be clear, to make sure that I understand your questions, they relate to, um, food preparation onsite, tax collection, um, for sold goods and, um, parking requirements for similarly situated business.
Correct, so if all of those, there was five of them, we're going to have food cooked on site, they'd all require probably grease traps and all that, I, I don't see room for all that. Um, if it's, if they're just, you know, food trucks without wheels, that's, that's a different story. Uh, but again, just, uh, like the Chick-fil-A that's there now, that's operating out of a trailer, it, it's just a question I have about, uh, cook, because I, I, I have a restaurant in Oconee and, you know, everybody that is there is not eating at one of the existing restaurants that are paying taxes, okay, just to make sure that if somebody is bringing in food from out of the county, that, that, that our county is collecting the sales tax, that's extremely important, you know, so that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me, let me make sure that we have everybody who's, um, asked to speak in opposition, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the request? Yes, ma'am, we have, we have twenty minutes for opposition.
I have a question, if, from what is shown on here, it's going to be outside, there's going to be horseshoe pit and ball games, and who's going to supervise all this? You know, if the businesses are closed, who's going to make sure the kids are behaving and, you know, whatever's going on? That's, that's just my question.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay. Thank you ma'am. Anybody else in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to the request? Is there anyone online who would like to speak in opposition to the request? Mr. Pittman, you're having an opportunity for clarification or rebuttal?
Yeah, so I'll try to, I'll try to respond to, to Ms. Bridges and Mr. Faulkner's questions. Again, first I want to point out though that, and again, to make everybody clear, the, the project's not what we, what we're voting on tonight. It's, it's, it's specifically the, whether or not the modular shell of this building is, is adequate or if they need to be 100% stick built. The project that's shown is allowed today. Ms. Bridges mentioned maybe needing a road to be built to get there. So there is inter parcel, there is a recorded inter parcel connectivity easement on all three of these properties recorded at the courthouse today. So all three properties have the, have the rights to use all the driveways that are on this property to access this. So there would be no new road to access this property. The, the comment about traffic, I completely understand the, the Hog Mountain Road traffic. You know, anytime I can bypass that, I try my best as well. A note I want to make on that though is this, this, again, we're not asking for a reason. This is on B2 today. This, this could, that could be an outback or whatever go on this property today by right, which would be tremendously more traffic than what we're proposing. This is probably, the proposal is probably as minimal of, of traffic that could be created on a B2 piece of property a, as you would possibly find. So yes, it would be an increase of worth that a day, but it, it's significantly better than what could be there and what eventually would be there if this, if this project wasn't built. The question about parking, so as part of the submittal, there was parking calculations turned in. So just as I mentioned about the inter parcel connectivity, there's also a shared parking agreement between all three of these parcels. There, there is enough parking on, on the three of these parcels for all of these uses. And Grace could verify that, but you know, all those, all those numbers have been turned in and verified by planning staff. Has a comment about noise. I don't, I don't know what kind of noise that would be there today from this development that would be any different than any other B2 property. And I, and I'm not making light of Ms. Bridges. I, I can, I can for sure understand the frustration with living, living across the road from commercial property. We deal with it as things change. And that's, you know, the, the, you guys in the BOC have done a really good job over the years keeping commercial property out of residential zones. This just happens to be one of those areas where Hog Mountain Road is kind of dividing line between residential and commercial. It's on B2 today. Supervision of the property. When these businesses are closed, Andy, you want to mention whether or not, I, I don't know what your hours of operation would be on the park. I'll kind of let you answer that question if you would.
Yeah, again, this is Andy Vars. I don't, I don't know what the hours on the park would be. We're not, we're not presenting that. We do have an envision that it would be an after, you know, five o'clock, an evening park and on weekends. As it relates to the capacity of the parking as it currently sits, I, again, I own both buildings in front and my office overlooks the parking lot for almost five years since the 1971 building was reconstructed. And I have never seen the parking lot pool ever. That's kind of a concern of mine because on the buildings, it needs to be full for conducting a business and customers. And, and I'm very respectful of that. And I promise you, nobody has a bigger concern relating to the availability of parking than I do building the unit. So I, I share that and appreciate the comment from those that are opposing the, the, the request here, but I can personally attest to the fact that I, my, my window overlooks these parking lots. And for five years, I've never seen the parking lot pool. So.
Well, let's, at this point, we're supposed to just let them finish and then we'll close the public hearing and, and go to the questions.
Just got a couple more. I think that, I think that touched on all of Ms. Bridges's questions, comments. Mr. Faulkner also had a question about parking, which I've touched on. As far as kitchens and grease traps goes, it, you know, again, this is B2, it could house a full service restaurant. If one of, if a, if a tenant were to come in and need a kitchen, they, they would be able, allowed to have a kitchen and B2 property. The health department would permit it like any other restaurant. And, and yes, they would be required grease traps. There's a sanitary sewer line that runs completely through the middle of this property today. It actually bisects some of these buildings. So it, it's easy access. There, there are some areas to add grease traps if needed. The question about sales tax. So the way sales tax works is you pay sales tax in the county that it's sold, the product sold in. So, so anything sold in O'Conie County pays sales tax to O'Conie County regardless of what the item originated. No, no different than a pack of M&amp;M's that are sold at, at Golden Pantry. The, the, they came from wherever M&amp;M's were created, but they were sold in O'Conie County. O'Conie County gets the sales tax. I think, I think that touches on everybody's questions or comments. I'm open to questions from you guys. And that, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I'll close the public hearing and return to the commission. Scott, do you have questions or comments?
Yeah, I do have a question. I was looking at the representative architecture and several of these examples look like they are storage shipping containers. Is that what we're looking at for this location?
That is correct. These are shipping containers.
Okay, thank you. No other questions.
Mike?
Yes, a couple of comments, I guess. One, I'm very impressed with the concept and the metal buildings they're talking about is a new trend in the food service industry. I am concerned about the parking and traffic. But I think this would be a plus for O'Conie County, something different for the community. It's just that in reality, in my opinion, the location of it probably isn't the best. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Nathan?
No comments or questions.
Matt?
Yeah, I got a question for for the app. Are there, are there, you, you, do you picture these businesses being all weather businesses? I mean, they're going to be open because when it rains or what, how do you picture that?
Well, Chick-fil-A has been there for several months and we've had some heavy rains and they've been open as an example.
Right, okay. Is your park, park going to be fenced with gate or is it, it's just going to be open to the public?
It's not currently designed with any fence store, you know, it, it does have a partial fence, just purely out of safety because there's a retention area on, on one of the sides, but it's not, it's not an enclosure, if that's your question.
You're right. How about, you talked about the restroom facilities for these?
Yes, they would be per code. I mean, we would have sufficient.
For the restroom facilities or the restroom facilities?
Yeah.
Inside a 20 foot.
That would be a separate building, like a community restroom, kind of like you see in a park situation.
Right. So it'd be open 24 hours a day, the restroom park, I guess, or?
No, probably wouldn't.
I would assume the businesses, well, I think it depends on when, when his park hours are. I think if the park's open, then the restaurants probably have to be open. You know, depending on what his hours are on that, if the park closes, they would lock restaurants.
Right, okay, thank you.
Chuck?
So the park hours was the place where I wanted to get some clarification. So I think I heard you say that you were aiming for audience of after 5:00 PM. And then of course, because of those ordinance and everything, you'd probably be shut down before 10:00 PM. But you don't envision this as a lunch spot type situation?
Well, I mean, we would hope that customers would find it valuable throughout the day, but our, our initial vision is that it'll be primarily for families after hours, after they get off from work and out of school. That way for me to, to know that.
Traffic or parking confliction, I could see it happening at a lunchtime when all your other businesses in that, those buildings are open and, and people are using the gym and that sort of thing. But after hours, I, I would see that you have ample, but the, the noise then would have to shut down at a certain time to, to be friendly to your neighbors. You got the Stone Bridge behind you and so forth, so.
Stone Bridge is not behind us.
Not directly?
No sir.
And so then the supervision after hours, if it becomes 11 o'clock and this becomes the high school hangout, what do you plan? A camera system and a O'Conie sheriff or, or what other?
Well, Mr. Chuck, I have another 15,000 square feet of customers and, and tenants that I've got to be protecting of. So I assure you that safety is a priority for me. I would like to be able to answer your questions more specifically, other than I intend to do it in a first class setting. But I, it feels as though the questions are a little straight from the, from the request. I, I'd be glad to, I just want to stick.
Plan and one of the reasons that we have the buildings is because it is easier to secure.
Sure.
Of course, you're going to have insurance companies and others that are also going to give you advice on this or I just.
Yeah, no, it's, and I have, I've, I've saw, you know, insurance quotes because you bring up a great point. I mean, so those will be top priority. I, I just don't have a, I'd be glad to prepare more specifics. The first hurdle is, is obtaining an approval for the, for the architectural.
Now, the one other question that I had is, do you imagine if a business tries this location, but then determines that they're not getting enough revenues and so forth? If they were to vacate, are we talking about remodeling that unit or do you have provisos for cutting that one off and put a fresh one there and, and build it up?
No, these, these units are, they're, they're expensive to construct. The amount of investment that would go per unit for what you might look on Craigslist and find a storage container is probably tenfold, 10 to 20 fold. So our, our intention would be that they would be permanent and they would be reconditioned for the appropriate use for a new tenant. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Penny?
No questions or comments.
Karen?
Yes, I have actually several comments and several questions. So I went to, just to quickly follow up on something that was just said, this is a little bit out of order from what I was going to ask about. You just commented that, that Stone Bridge is not behind this, but in fact, the new residential development that is being built in, across the street from the existing Stone Bridge neighborhood is behind it. Is that correct?
Stone Bridge is not behind it. You're correct.
No, no, that's not my question. Stone Bridge is an existing neighborhood. There's a new neighborhood that's being built. I live in Stone Bridge. So I'm looking at the map and looking at the, at the property. The new residential area that is being built across the street from the existing Stone Bridge neighborhood would be behind it. Is that correct?
Karen, you, you are correct. The Stone, the, the Stone Bridge Village that is in construction, it is behind this property. You, you're correct.
Okay. And, and that's, that really wasn't, I just wanted to correct that, like, because I think a couple of people were interested in that. So I just wanted to be sure that people understood about that. I wanted to say, I mean, I, I, I like the concept of this and the idea of this, but, but I, I took you up on the idea of looking at some other cities while, while we were here during the meeting, just taking a quick look online. And it feels to me like these developments in other places are typically in a place that is far more walkable than, than this area where people can walk on a sidewalk. I mean, you know, as I just said, I live nearby. I'd love to be able to access something like this. But that intersection is really a nightmare already. And, and the idea that more traffic will be there as a result of this, I mean, for example, the days when Chick-fil-A does have its food truck there. You know, there's, there's traffic backed up coming out of there. And the fact that there aren't a lot of sidewalks or other ways for the, the neighborhoods even in the area to access this, I think is a real, a real downside. And so I would just mention that to you, like thinking about this concept going forward. I think it really needs to connect to the neighborhoods around there because these are essentially kind of downtown, in town developments in a lot of, of other places, it seems like where people can walk to them. But the, the, I guess, the, the, I have one question for the, for the applicant and then one question for the, for the planning department. My question for the applicant is, is it your intention? If, if this is not approved, because what we are, I understand that what we're approving here is not the idea of this development. It is the, the specific type of building that you would use, whether you could bring something in or you'd have to do something stick built. So my question for you is, is it your intention to, to develop this with stick built property if, if for some reason this is not approved?
I don't have an answer for that at this time.
Okay. All right. And then I guess my, my question to the planning department is, I, I'm just wondering, given that this is zoned B2, if let's say the example that was given before was that you could come along and perhaps build an outback there or any kind of restaurant, you know, maybe Chick-fil-A would come in and put a, a, you know, restaurant there. I understand that that could happen, perhaps with this zoning. Would they not be required to put in any additional parking? They would just be sharing the parking that already exists there because it's, there aren't very many spaces, you know, and like I said, the in and out of that, it's so close to the intersection. It's really shocking to me that existing zoning would allow a restaurant to, to be put there. And so I'm wondering, is that the case? Is that accurate? And secondly, would, would, and a new restaurant built there, if there was a big new restaurant, just share parking with the other buildings that are already there?
So any, any use that is allowed by right that comes into this, into this property would need to have the UDC required number of spaces. That would, you know, the way that that's laid out would be determined by the applicant and at the time of development, it would be reviewed by planning. Typically, we see it, parking associated with the use on the same parcel. But the UDC does allow for some shared parking if they can demonstrate that the highest number of spaces needed at any particular time of day will be met.
And what would the, I'm wondering also, given that there is going to be a residential neighborhood behind there, is the, is the buffer between the residential neighborhood and this already set? Is that some, I mean, would we be seeing this come back to us for further approvals?
So there is a companion variance that's been submitted with this application. That variance is to waive the 50 foot buffer that is required along that rear property line. And you can see that area on the concept plan. That will be heard by the BOC, but not by the planning commission.
I see. So, so, so if we were, so if we were to approve this tonight, the BOC will vote not only on this, but on an additional thing that we are not hearing about tonight?
That is correct.
Okay.
Karen, do you have any other questions?
I don't think so. I think that's it. Thank you.
Steven?
Thanks Brad. Hopefully everyone can hear me okay. And I, I do echo Karen's comments that the, the modular building concept is trendy and I think it's unique to this area. It has its place somewhere. I'm not sure that this geographically is the right location. You know, I would like to see it somewhere in O'Conie County. I think it's differentiated from a brick and mortar shopping mall. Um, you know, I would like to see it somewhere in O'Conie County. I think it's differentiated from uh a brick and mortar shopping mall. Um, I think the questions around the uh the traffic are justifiable. Uh, the, you know, the way it could be built today with with stick, you know, for example, brick and mortar. Um, you know, that's you that's that's still gonna have the same impact, uh unfortunately. Um, but it's something that has to be uh ta- taken into consideration. So, yeah, I think we just have to to give it some thought and reflection before voting if a modular building concept is is right for this particular location. Um, and I I just want a point of clarification with the applicant. Uh, the uh the 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 request from the applicant would be to uh stricken condition number four. Um, if it were to be voted for approval versus denial, um is that accurate? And are there any additional um conditions that you're asking to strike?
Um, I I don't think we're asking to strike any conditions. Um, condition four is basically just a condition that says if it's approved, we that we would build it per our our representative architecture. So we we're not even asking to strike condition four. There there would be accents as shown on the representative architecture.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification.
Steve, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Gavin?
Alrighty. Uh, yes, I do have a few questions. Uh, one, I I I really, all all of the the commissioners have 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 made uh great comments. I all of them are uh are in line with what I would I would uh uh would think uh and and are as much a part of my uh uh worries or distress over this particular uh property. Uh, I have an interest in uh a property that is also in Stone Ridge subdivision. Uh, so the this the, I think that it would be a wonderful uh site, uh, you know, walking type development that incorporated, you know, uh options for food and kids and families hanging out and being together and all that. Unfortunately, I think I think there's a lot of questions that really have to be answered. Uh, you know, for example, I I've I've been involved in in donating and and been in building a a a baseball field and and uh and and building concession stands in a in a uh community park. Uh, setting up five oh one three Cs and donating all that stuff to the county uh and having a situation where a parking wreck would would manage that property where uh, you know, the conference uh conservation exchange, there would be some uh tax benefits to the owner, so forth and so on, but the uh and grantor, of course, but the the there there's a lot of ways that this could be done that would answer those questions about the lighting and how much of it and how how kids are gonna be uh after hours, uh, you know, those adult kid, those those older kids that tend to you know, take a golf cart and drive it, drive it around and 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 spray paint on things and and do stupid things that that we might have done as a teenager somewhere back in the in the day. Uh, there's a lot of variables there. And then and then, of course, uh, you know, this separation, uh, this easement, uh, special use, uh, to me, that's what uh most of this is about. If this does not become a park type development. I think the community has given up a lot by by granting uh any sort of uh amendment to because it uh, you know, you may be saying that uh the the mayor commission is will be the ones that will be deciding. Obviously, they will decide everything, whether it's permitted or not. But in this application, it spells out specifically that they are including in this application a special use request to amend that uh zoning. And uh tried to remember exactly where that uh that item was was placed. I saw it somewhere in here. Anyway, uh, I'll find it. But then also, uh, the I I would question these traffic numbers. Um, I think there needs to be a a lot more stu- study in regards to that. And uh, you know, garbage collecting, how many, how many, how many containers, all these items that regard to restaurants and the health department and, you know, all the management at uh issues involved with that. So, you know, I just think it either it would be better at another location or there needs to be uh some sit down between uh, you know, neighbors and some of the parties that have it have experience with with this type of project. And because I think it's a wonderful concept. I think that it would be wonderful. But at this point, I I I just don't think I could vote for it.
Gavin, any other questions or comments?
No, sir.
Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Matt, go ahead.
Can you um kind of clarify number four for me, Grace? One thing talks about shall contain wood, brick, stone, axe, and are are you guys gonna put a percentage on the applicant for the stone brick axe in it? How's that actually gonna happen? I mean, who's gonna say, well, this is good and this ain't?
Sure, it would be at the time of building permits, um, and it would be subject to the images that they submitted that contain those accents.
So it'll be subject to those. So we got, so if there's any percentage or stone or whatever we're gonna, you guys are gonna calculate off of those drawings?
Correct. It would be need to be compliant with those images.
Okay, great.
Chuck?
It's been a lot of discussion as to whether this location or this type of concept should be taken elsewhere, but I want to contend that this is about as walkable as O'Conie currently gets. Uh, for instance, Hog Mountain Road, while it is ugly at times, is in our jurisdiction and putting a lit crosswalk with, you know, a push button indicator that would allow that large neighborhood that lives behind this uh uh bridge uh bridges, they would be a perfect audience for this type of uh especially a little bit after hour, they short commute. And then on the fifty foot mandatory buffer, it's exactly why we can't get walkability in some situations because with partnership with this project and Stone Bridge, there is a possibility that a walkable path from the backside from Stone Bridge could be easily uh made. And therefore, this would be one of the most unique sites for walkability that this county has so far tried. And and so the scale of this is small enough that the parking that exists is probably gonna work. If you asked for ten modular units for ten possibilities, you might really overstrike the capacity of any parking there. But the five uh with Chick-fil-A possibly having the drive through option. This is about as doable as it gets, in my opinion, and it has the potential of setting the walkable community um initiative that we have had a hard time getting in this town. I mean, when I asked for the neighborhoods around Malcolm Bridge to allow walkable access from the neighborhoods, it was, you know, hard to imagine, but there's a lot of parents that sure wish they don't have to drive out on Mars Hill or onto Malcolm Bridge to drive around to deliver their kids to the school because there's a bunch of neighborhoods that abut the backside of it. So I think this has got a pretty good chance of testing the waters for O'Conie County, and I feel for the owner if it doesn't fly. But I think it's got about as best a chance as I've seen come across here. And I've been up here for about ten years now. So that's my comment.
So Chuck, this is Karen. I would say, I mean, one frustration for me is I'm not really sure what we need to do to make that kind of thing a reality in the county, whether this is a D O T thing or a board of commission thing or not, but um, you know, like the the fact that we can like check boxes off with some with sidewalks, um, for example, that are along Experiment Station or along Hog Mountain Road in some cases, but they're like a foot from the road. Um, those are not really walkable. It's like somebody like said, okay, on paper, we've got a sidewalk here, but um, what we really desperately need, and I'm saying this partly because Amory Harden is here and listening, and maybe he can pass this on to the commissioners. Um, the commissioners need to get out and walk some of these walkways and see whether or not they are walkable because some of them are really not. And and yet, we know that there's a there's a huge relationship between um the controlling the amount of traffic, I mean, keeping traffic at a minimum between economic development. Um, and all like all of those things go hand in hand and all across the country where, you know, uh, the communities that are um are growing in good ways, that are not, they're not bringing in more traffic, that aren't turning into a Gwinnett County are the communities that are more walkable. And it feels like we just don't have that vision here in O'Conie. And I would love to see something like this be part of that. Um, but the the B O C really needs to take a look and go, okay, how can we connect more sidewalks to this if something like this is gonna be built? Um, and that's that's not, you know, it's not gonna happen if it's all up to private owners of land. They're not gonna put in sidewalks. But yeah, sidewalk between this and some of the neighborhoods that connect to it would be amazing, as a sidewalk from the back. Um, you know, walkways or a walking trail of some kind. And we really need that kind of vision. And I don't see that. I I, you know, I'm, it's very frustrating to me that um nobody really seems to be looking at that despite the fact that we have this um this land use plan that's supposed to have a vision, but I don't feel like the vision is really there. So anyway, sorry, I'll get off my soapbox now, but um, you know, I'd love to see more of this kind of thing, but we have to think about the big picture. And I don't think something that people are driving to in this particular area is the right big picture.
Karen, I'm gonna bounce right back, just not to drag this out too long, but you've you've got to have places to walk to before the walking really gets started. So I I like this open, yes, for the time being, people probably will drive uh get an available parking spot, but I think there will be some community members that don't live far from here. And I've seen this every day with the sidewalks that we built from Butler's Crossing to the high schools. It started off, there was one young lady that walked to high school back and forth every day for four years, and she's graduated. But nowadays, there's twenty to thirty kids that walk from the high school all the way to Butler's Crossing. There's kids that are walking down Whippoorwill Road without a sidewalk. There's kids that are walking down uh fifty-three without sidewalks to get to the neighborhood that's across the street from the uh O'Conie High School. So until we have the places to walk to, there will be a large, hard argument to, we need sidewalks. So uh the the new Mars Hill Road is becoming a fitness center uh with regular walkers and and so on. So I think this particular type project has the potential to get some of that collaboration that would allow the walkable. And I think for today, that's probably as far as we need to take.
Well, I understand that's out, this is out of scope. Uh, the the vast discussion and, you know, more of a live, work, play, community type concept. Uh, but has the applicant had any discussions with the developer on of the proposed community on the backside of the property a about an interconnect or some type of access where residents could easily walk over to these modular food trucks?
I welcome any opportunity to partner with the neighborhoods and surrounding properties. Uh, as of today, I have not engaged any uh anybody in the neighborhood that's being built behind us or the Stone Bridge neighborhood that's existing, but I would gladly affiliate with that and welcome any discussion, and I'd be glad to initiate them if that's helpful for the board.
Any other discussion or questions or comments from the commission?
Yes, this this is Gavin. I'd like to just say one thing. I think Karen brought up some some uh very good uh the very good comments in regard to the interconnection, you know, connectivity of of walking and uh biking wasn't mentioned, you know, biking in Athens. I was I was involved with the planning commission in Athens twenty something years ago. So that was during the time when we were looking at those 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 things. Uh, and I don't think that that, you know, it that we're necessarily looking at that uh there, but I think walking an appropriate way to have that done, where it's done in a safe way. Uh, I have a vested interest. I grew up right down the street. I used to walk down to all of the the little businesses down there back when they were, you know, my, our family doctor was down there. We walked to the doctor of all of all things, you know. I went to the Dairy Queen, those sorts of things. So uh and rode my bike down there. So I, you know, um, I would love to see something similar to what the uh the owner of the property and uh uh is attempting to do. I I truly would. Uh, I think there's uh there's just a little more thought that uh that needs to go in uh in order for us to uh uh fulfill our goal or fulfill our responsibility uh to the commissioners. I think we need to consider uh, you know, whether or not uh we're ready to say yes without answering a few more questions.
Thank you.
Any other comments, uh, discussion or a motion?
I'll go ahead and give it a fly. I would like to see this uh special use P twenty-one zero zero five six approved, but with the conditions as the staff has recommended.
All right, we have a motion to approve with conditions from Chuck Hunt. Do we have a second? Second from Matt Elder. Is there any discussion? If not, Scott, how do you vote?
I approve.
Mike?
Approved.
Nathan?
Deny.
Matt? Chuck?
Approve.
Penny?
Approved.
Karen?
Approve.
Stephen?
Approved.
And Gavin?
I wanna approve, uh, but I will uh, um, I would like to say no at this time.
Okay, just to be clear, you have said you would like to say no, yes, and you would like to say no. So I I need a definitive answer from.
That that the answer, I I I'm saying that I would like to approve, but I can't at this time. So I I would say I do not approve.
That is a no. All right. Uh, motion is approved on a vote of seven to two. Uh, as there are no other items on the agenda, I'll accept. Nathan Bur. No, I've I'll accept to entertain a motion to dismiss.
Stephen Strickland, I'll make a motion that we dismiss.
Scott Green, second.
Scott Green, second. Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.